Good morning, everyone. This regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission is now called to order. If you would please stand for the invocation will be given by Pastor Rocky Pugh of Emmanuel Baptist Church Church on Bigler Boulevard and please remain standing afterward for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Let's pray. Well, Father, you are all with wisdom. Father, your son, Jesus, is the personification of wisdom. And Father, we know that as we follow you and your wisdom as is revealed in your word, Father, you bless us, you bless our city, our county, our state, our nation. Father, forgive us for when we've ignored that wisdom, when we've forgotten it. Father, bring us back to it. We pray that your wisdom would be upon every person in our county, upon every one of these commissioners here before us this morning, Commissioner Lugood, Commissioner Hudson, Commissioner Carl, every person again, Father, in our city, in our state, in our nation, and especially on me. Father, we are all sinners in need of your grace through faith in your son, Jesus. Father, we pray in his name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you, Pastor Pugh. This morning, we have a resolution to present is Chanda Brown here. Is she here? From Lifeline Counseling Center. Commissioners, would you join me? And this is in honor of 2-1-1 Day in Mobile. Welcome, Chanda.
Recognizing 2-1-1 Day in Mobile County, keep calm, call 2-1-1. Whereas United Way of Southwest Alabama advances the common good for all of our citizens by creating opportunities for a better life for everyone, and whereas for 12 years, United Way of Southwest Alabama has sponsored the United Way 2-1-1 in our region, the information and real services facilitated by Lifeline Counseling Services available to residents in Mobile, Washington, Clark, Choctaw, Gambria, Baldwin, Connect, and Monroe Counties. And whereas United Way 2-1-1 is a 24-hour call center and online database resource available at no charge to all citizens of every socioeconomic and educational levels in Mobile County. In 2018, call specialists answered 9,197 calls and provided 863 callers opportunity to join the A-Reset Program for those which return to the workforce, provided resource information to 560 veterans and their families, assisted 467 individuals and families with childhood developmental screens and referrals, answered 411 calls to the National Suicide Prevention Hotline. And whereas in the case of any life emergency requiring, including assistance with basic needs, education, financial stability, health care, veteran services, volunteer opportunities, and emergency responses, United Way wants to remind everyone to keep calm, call 2-1-1. And whereas the Mobile County Commission strongly supports and endorses the critical services that United Way 2-1-1 provides for the citizens of our region, whereas United Way 2-1-1 is a critical and necessary service for those who live in our area, now therefore let it be resolved that the Mobile County Commission does hereby proclaim February 11, 2019, as 2-1-1 Day in Mobile County. Furthermore, we urge everyone in Mobile County to give advocate and volunteer to support 2-1-1 services. Senator Hudson, President Derek Hall, Commissioner, Mr. Siriul.
Thank you so much for recognizing us on this national day. I think this is an amazing opportunity to bring recognition to this community resource that we can all take advantage of, that lets us know about out in human resource services in our community. So, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. We have several speakers to address item number 37 on the agenda. I would like to remind speakers that you're limited to five minutes. A timer will sound at four minutes and 30 seconds, so please wrap up your presentation in that last 30 seconds. The first person to speak is Ann Foley.
When you come to the podium, if you would, please restate your name and give your address, please, for the record.
No, I'm not for 37, I'm on there for 36.
Okay. If you want me to speak on that one?
Well, go ahead, yes.
My name is Ann Foley. I reside at 6,001 Born Road, and I see that we have the preliminary plat approval suggestion for Creekside Estates, which I'm excited about. But I have a question about where's the drainage outfall going? I know there's a retention pond there, but I would like to see them consider pipe and drainage for that because the water that runs from there is very fast if heavy rains. Also, I'm concerned about the traffic there because we have so many wrecks between Old Spanish Trail and Born Road because of the curve that's there. So for any future subsequent units, I would ask them to do a traffic and speed study and consider putting in a deceleration lane because this is coming, on Carroll Plantation Road, it's coming over the I-10 overpass. Then they're coming pretty fast there, but they're also coming fast from a red line curve to turn into this subdivision. So I'm just asking you to please look into that, consider that, and do a traffic and speed study. And I would like more information on the drainage, whatever type of drainage they have planned for there.
Thank you. Is there-
Good morning, Ann.
Good morning.
Is there someone from engineering who can address these issues? Matthew, thank you. If you would, Ms. Foley, just step aside and let Matthew speak.
And we also have a representative from the consulting engineer, Sawgrass Consulting, who's here, who may be able to speak to more specific. We have a set of plans that aren't fully approved yet, but have a general idea about the drainage that goes into a large pond, and they appear to be handling some coming off the road and putting in some pipe to take it to the pond. With regard to the speed and traffic, we don't have any requirements for our study, but we can, you know, at the commission's pleasure, you can require a study for speed and traffic for any future units prior to acceptance, if you so desire.
Well, even if we accept this, what I would like for us to do is do a study on that. I'd love to see a red light there is what I'd like to see. I'd like to see us break that traffic up because of that hill by the ballpark, and it's all down here and it's wide open. And if we can break that traffic in somehow, red light is the first thing that comes to mind, but if we can slow that traffic up somehow, make it a little more, make them be a little more cautious because that is a red track.
We can certainly work with our traffic engineering department to see what the best solution to slow traffic in that area is.
And a turn lane would be the county's responsibility, not the developer usually?
It depends on the traffic study. The commission has in the past asked the developer to pay for deceleration lines.
We want the developer to pay for all of it. That's a joke. I know it won't happen, but we'll get as much as we can through the developer. But thank you, Ms. Foley. We'll certainly take a look at it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Now onto item number 37. The first speaker is Jonathan-
One quick question. You're asking us to approve this today, but we don't have a final plat? Explain that.
This is a preliminary plat. And so it's set up so that the commission approves the preliminary plat-
Correct.
-prior to the construction of the roads, and that's, in a sense, an assurance to the developer that the development is authorized and that they can move ahead with the construction.
Okay.
That we'll come back to the commission with the final plat once the roads have been constructed to county standards.
Okay, so we're going to negotiate this turn lane or this red light before or after this vote? My question to you.
Hold it over. We are at, if you don't mind, can we hold this over one, and we'll talk to the developer about putting-
Well, let's look at it and see if it's necessary first before we ask them to do something that's unnecessary.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
So, but for the issues that were raised today, they satisfied?
Correct. The preliminary plat as presented to the engineering department for administrative review and for your approval today meets the subdivision regulations.
Okay. It's just these two new issues?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Do you want to speak on this? I think I recognize you.
I'm Ursel Godwin, Sawgrass Consulting. We're the consulting engineering firm for the developer. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. Do you want to look at a potential traffic study for Phase 1, or do you want to look at traffic studies and impacts for future phases?
I think Phase 2 would be the most important. If this is based on Phase 1, 1 only?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I'll assure you, for Phase 2, those studies will be done. I'll give you that.
Sure. I don't think we'll have a problem doing a traffic study, you know, down the line. I don't, you know, it's not the ordinary for multi-phase development to, at some point, trigger a need for that. We've just not 100% laid out all additional phases. That's why we didn't bring a master plan ahead of the Phase 1.
So how many lots are we talking about in Phase 1?
39.
Okay.
So, you know, not that many lots, but, you know, if we could potentially move on this one today, maybe could get Phase 1 approved. We still have some things to work through with engineering in terms of getting the plans and the permits issued. If we need to look at a traffic study at that time, you know, I feel like we could probably do that.
Well, I promise you, this is in my district, and I'll see a traffic study before we approve 2. I don't mind working with you on this first one.
Okay.
I still want us to look at, everybody shaking their head down there. Does that mean no?
Commissioner, I would not recommend that we approve today, Phase 1. We need to request some additional right-of-way from the developer for that proposed turn lane after the traffic study is completed. In my opinion, they do not need to be moving ahead with construction unless that is resolved.
You are the man.
That's my recommendation.
We're giving right-of-way now? I mean, do you think, you foresee there being wider than an 80-foot right-of-way? Because-
Can we do this in a two-week period? Are we going to need? Okay. All right. So let's hold it over and let's get Mr. Kegley's questions answered before we move any further.
Okay.
I would feel, he's paid to lead us in that direction, so I feel following him.
All right.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
The next speaker is Jonathan Ford.
Good morning, Mr. Ford. If you'd restate your name and give your address, please.
My name is Jonathan Ford. My address is 1257 Colliton Drive, Sims, Alabama. I'm here on behalf of the Colliton Drive, I mean, Colliton Place Community. I'm not really sure what they're asking of us, but like I stated the last time I was here, like my other residents in the neighborhood, they were all told that the land that they're trying to develop was a wetland when we bought. That's the only reason we bought there because nobody was ever supposed to be able to build there. But now we're just, I mean, building owners, and the county has not approved them to build. Maybe to build a road, but they're getting ready to build houses, and we're just trying to find out what's going on.
Matthew, would you please come forward and speak to this one if you would? You can just either step aside or have a seat, Mr. Ford.
And again, we've got a representative from the developer and from the engineering department, or the engineering consultant for this one. The issues, the key issues we talked about previously were the wetlands and were the grading of the subdivision. They've put a grading plan which shows how they're going to move the water around the house, the homes that are going to be constructed in these lots, actually delineated the wetlands, and they've provided us some documentation about how they're going to ensure that the houses are constructed to, particularly the foundations are constructed to code and are substantial enough to support the house construction.
Have they received their core permit?
I think they are staying out of the wetlands, which wouldn't require a core permit.
So they're not actually constructing in wetlands?
Correct.
Okay.
But they've delineated them on the plat and are staying out of them. We went out and did an inspection of this construction after the last meeting, and we met with the air and called the engineer, and they've made some revisions to the plans to better handle the drainage and to better protect the downstream properties, in addition to revamping their erosion and sediment control.
So they've met all the requirements, and you're satisfied?
They do, they have met the questions that were raised. We still have the waiver of the building setback line so that it's consistent with the rest of the community.
Okay. Okay, okay. Thank you, Matthew. Does that answer your questions, Mr. Ford?
No, not really.
If you'll step back up.
Yeah, like I said, when we bought there, all of us, when we bought there, we were told that no one could ever build there but due to a wetland being there.
I think, I don't know who told you that, but I think this is buyer beware because it is more difficult to build around wetlands, but it's certainly not impossible if they meet certain requirements with mitigation. And it sounds like in this case, according to Matthew, they're not actually building in the wetlands, so they have every right to develop the property.
Okay.
Thank you. Did you need to speak?
I'm sorry, I'm signing up. I'm Vince Lacoste with Bethel Engineering, the consultant engineer on this project. I wanted to give maybe a little history for his comment. Honestly, I don't know where that came from, except the different firm when this first phase was done, you know, 10 or 12 years ago. And at the time, the original Phase 1 included lots exactly where we're building them now in Phase 2. There was a non, we believed to be a non-jurisdictional wetland, which is a grady pond that did not have an outfall in this area. The phase actually went much further up into this because we thought we could fill those wetlands. We got out there during construction, clearing the land, and the core, you know, came out, and the farmer had cut a ditch out of that grady pond, which made it now a jurisdictional wetland. So we basically stopped Phase 1 short of what was originally approved, and just said, hey, we got to continue. So it just stopped, and it had sat that way through the economic downturn and other phases being built. So now we went in and read and redined the remainder of that phase to stay out of the wetlands that are there. So maybe this, you know, maybe this story that got confused at that time was that it got stopped because of wetlands, because it really did at the time. But we stopped short, and then now we're building up to those wetland lines, but not into those wetlands. So hopefully that provides some insight as to maybe how this confusion has occurred.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lacoste.
And they have set the lines for us back off the road of these lots? Because I see some of them are pretty shallow.
There is a waiver, part of this agenda item is a waiver of the setback lines to be consistent with the first phase and the third phase, which have been approved and accepted.
And what were those setback lines?
15 feet, I think, and I think they're doing 20 feet on this one.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
All those questions haven't been answered. If Robert Mitchell would like to step forward if he has questions.
My name is Robert Mitchell. I live at 1257 Colliton Drive, and I was just wondering, we got a letter saying they were still not in regulation, and I want to know what regulation that they were still not into.
You received a letter saying that this development was not within regulation?
Yeah, that's what it-
That's the building setback.
Oh, because, right, asking for the waiver on the setback.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. To be consistent with the other phases being developed, or that have been developed.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Nidra Ford, and I also live at 1257 Colliton Drive, and as he was stating, he don't know who told us. We were told by the D.R. Horton representatives, we all that are represented here today, we purchased our homes at different times through different D.R. Horton representatives, and we were all told the same thing. So that they weren't building back there behind. My issues are, for one, the water running that's behind our house. There is really nowhere that they could put drainage behind our house, and the way that our property lines will be, it'll be sloped. So the house, I mean, the water would drain from our property down, basically, and then from the houses that are behind us, it'll come down too. And it'll basically, to me, see, it's just like a little stream of water that'd be going through the middle. The wetland, my question is, how do you eliminate wetlands? Like, is it not protected like some kind of environmental services or anything?
Well, as you heard, this development is not being constructed within the wetlands.
Okay. But the thing that we have here is showing wetlands, so it's the little part right here, is this where the lots will show off? Because from what it's showing here, things like the lots that they'll be putting, it consists of the wetlands within the lots that they're building.
Matthew, would you like to speak to how the wetlands are delineated?
They generally would hire a consultant who would come out and look for a couple of different characteristics, hydroics soils, certain plants. In this case, the wetlands being on the lot themselves is not a violation, they just can't build in those wetlands. And you'll see behind tab 5 in your engineering book that they did, they delineated the wetlands on the plat. And any plans that we've approved so far have not shown any development inside those wetlands.
Okay. So the county is not approving any development in the wetlands with this agenda item?
But it can be included in their property land?
Yes. Yes, I own about eight acres of wetland on my property.
You can own it, but they're not developing.
Developing on it, okay. Another issue that I have, and I think it'll affect our property value, the lot and the traffic. There are currently, where we are now, about 50, they're building the phase, we have about 50 homes, and then the phase that we first moved in Phase 1, it already has about 50 homes. There's only one way in and one way out. We're right there on House Fair Road in the county. So it's going to be 100 plus homes and only one way in and one way out to get out the whole subdivision. So will there be some other interests?
What's the relation with that, Matthew?
We, there are no clauses in our subdivision regulations that deal with access in that sense. The master plan was previously approved by the planning commission, which included these lots, all these lots into this one ingress egress point.
So the county has no legal authority to require anything more than what is shown?
None that I'm aware of.
It's just ingress egress?
None that I'm aware of.
Another question that I have. How can the city approve, like, the building in this in the county? Doesn't Sims County have their own government? No? Maybe that's a civil question.
Do you want to give a brief response to that?
There are quirks in Alabama state law that allow cities to exercise what they call extraterritorial jurisdictions, which is, they are able to exert authority outside their city limits. The city of Sims has a police jurisdiction that they do permitting in. Their police jurisdiction extends this far currently. The Sims, the Sims that you see in your address is a stop at the post office and is related to mail delivery rather than the regulatory authority.
Even if we don't receive any other, we cannot receive any other, like, city services such as trash pickup, anything like that, so that's still-
The law still limits what authorities the cities can exercise. In this case, typically, planning and policing authorities.
So it's limit to those? Okay. Thank you.
Then it'll be the last thing that I have.
Okay, is this the last question?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we've exceeded the five minutes, so last question, but go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's just, like I said, we were all told that we weren't, you know, they weren't building. And unfortunately, we have neighbors there now that'll be moving because, you know, they feel like they've been deceived and lied to, basically. And another issue that I have is the home, where they have the lot, the plot fence, it will be 10 feet from our property line, it'll be the back of a home. We currently do not have a fence, but I would think that it would be hard for us to sell our home when there's a home that's sitting 10 feet from our property line, and that'll be the back of the house they currently have. So, I mean, what do we do? That's what I want to know.
Our subdivision regulations don't provide for side or back setbacks. And in this case, that's unfortunate, but I don't know that we have a remedy for the homes being close together in this case.
Do you know what your lot number was when you purchased it?
13.
13? Okay, I see it here. Thank you.
Reducing that setback would also help. It allows them to move that house even closer to the road and away from the back lot line. So if we kept that 25 foot, it would push that house, that structure even closer to the back property line. So by granting the waiver, you're actually allowing that house to be further away from the back property line because they're moving it towards the-
They're moving it, making it closer, right. So it's, in that respect, it would be a good thing in terms of adding additional space between-
Yes, ma'am. It would be beneficial-
Lot line and house.
To the back neighbors, yes, ma'am.
And Vince Lacoste, again, if I could say, we had submitted this as a 20 setback. We actually had wanted a 15 to match, you know, the original phase. That would allow it to move even closer to the street if you guys, you know, wanted to consider, you know, a 15 that would match the most of the phase, but we have asked for a 20. But we're okay either way.
Where do we stand, gentlemen? No objection? Would 15 add additional distance between?
It potentially allow them to move the houses five feet closer to the road, which would-
Give them extra, extra five feet of space?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If engineering has no objection, can we incorporate that?
Yes.
Can that be done after we vote on this, or before?
Or do we need to amend this? We need to amend this before the vote? How should we handle this?
If you would be kind enough to just amend the waiver from 20 feet, 25 feet to 15 feet, that would be fine.
Was 20 to 15 or 25?
It was 20 was our request, and it would be 15. Let me say, that will give the opportunity for them to build closer to the road. I don't know that it gives them that requirement too, but I think they would like to, you know, I don't necessarily handle that side of how they cite the houses on the lot, but it would certainly give them that opportunity, and it would keep it in, you know, in line with the previous phase that's just adjacent to it.
Right. And give them a little more-
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure we answered the water, where the water's going to go. I don't know that that question was answered.
They have provided us a great- They have provided us a grading plan where they show proposed locations of many of the homes, if you're behind tab five. They've tried to account for all the water coming from the back of the existing properties, and provided a route to get to the drainage system that they are installing with this unit.
Is this an open ditch?
No, sir.
Is drainage going in behind the lines?
The drainage, typically, it would be a, basically, a V-notch ditch, which would carry the water between the structures. It's what they did in phase three. They constructed a small swell to go between the houses to carry the water, instead allowing it to pond behind the houses to carry it down to the streets.
So it works the same way?
Yes, ma'am.
That V is dirt?
It's grassed, but V-shaped.
And so these residents will have to worry about water pooling coming from somewhere else into their yards, eroding away their yards?
There may, you know, the water will be coming through, and there's always the chance when water comes through for erosion. The plan looks like they've tried to make reasonable accommodations to not have slopes that would be subject to a greater than normal erosion when we get as much rain as we do in, here in the county. It appears they've tried to count for those things.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Mr. Lacoste. Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, we still have two speakers if they'd like to speak. Barbara Johnson?
Okay.
And Cassandra Mitchell.
Good morning.
Hello, Ms. Mitchell. If you could give us your address, please, for the record?
1267 Collington Drive.
Okay.
I'm concerned about, because of the space between the houses, I mean, when we go out our back door, the way they got these houses set up, they're looking right directly in our face. I mean, I mean, no privacy. And this is a big concern when you have key here. I mean, you ought to see how tight these houses are going to be. If you let, if you go back five feet, come back five feet, it doesn't matter. I mean, when we walk, we walk out our back door, it's gonna be a house here, a house here. I mean, we gonna feel so tightly, just, we won't be able to breathe, no kind of privacy or anything. And when they told us that they wasn't gonna build because of wetlands, we thought it wasn't, that was the purpose of us purchasing the property, the lot, the house. That's what we thought. If we thought they was gonna build behind us, we would've never, ever, we wouldn't even thought about purchasing that house there. We couldn't go anywhere else. And I'm very concerned about that. I mean, I don't understand. I mean, their word is their bond, and that's what they told us.
Well, I think the issue here is, I think you were told, and I'm not sure who told you all, that there could be no development because there's their wetlands present. Typically, it's a lot harder to develop wetlands. Now, what Mr. Lacoste and his company is doing is constructing around the wetlands. They're not actually constructing on the wetlands. So as far as what you were told, that is correct. They're not developing in the wetlands.
Okay. But as far as the houses, the houses is gonna be right on top of us. I mean, if you even go up for five feet, it's still, it's right there. I mean, wow, you guys ought to see how tight these houses are going to be.
The county has no regulations in place that would prohibit that. And a developer and an owner, a property owner, has the right to develop their property as long as they do it within regulations.
Well, understandable, but they shouldn't have told us that, or we would've never...
And I won't disagree with that. You know, this is why in this state, it's what's called caveat emptor. It's buyer beware. You have to be careful what people tell you, because oftentimes, you may be told things that are not accurate, and it's really up to the buyer to make sure that what you're being told is accurate. And it's unfortunate that this happens, but, you know, we don't, we don't have the legal authority to prohibit someone from developing their property if they, the regulations.
So we're just pretty much stuck. If we try to sell our property, no one is gonna wanna buy that house there because of the way their house is gonna be set right there. And it's just crazy. I mean, I just don't understand that. I mean, it's just depressing.
Well, based on, for what it will help, the setback is going to be changed, so there should be a little more room between houses as far as the setback on...
It's a big building, it doesn't, it really not gonna matter, back five feet, up five feet. It's not, it's not gonna matter, it's just gonna be tight still back there.
We deduce a lot of these neighborhoods, and privacy fences is an option. I know my sister actually lives in 177, and she has a privacy fence, very small backyard. She's single, it's perfect for her, I mean, that's what she likes and what she wants.
Yeah, my point is, the houses are still right there. When you go out, you like, you caved in because of the houses are right there in your face. That's what it's still like, is you feel like you're caved in because of how tight they're going to be. And if we, that's the purpose of us buying that property, the house there, because we thought wetlands was gonna be back there, they couldn't build back there. So that was the purpose of us buying our house there. But now, we're sort of kind of stuck, whereas if we try to put our house up to sell, it's gonna be hard to sell it.
Those are all of the speakers who have registered, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, Glenn?
Number one, approve the list of claims. Number two, adopt a resolution.
Did we vote on one?
No.
Yes. No, we have...
Who wants to vote on it, Glenn?
We need to vote before we go to number two. He thought we were in a conference meeting, ding ding, that's what it was, we threw him off the other day.
Glenn, you're fast.
We're gonna get through this agenda, aren't we? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
That's number one. All right, number two, adopt a resolution fixing financial charge or tax to be paid by owners of forest lands located in Mobile County for the use of the land.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, approve levies for alcoholic beverages for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Number four, authorize amending the renewed sub-recipient agreement with Southwest Chapter of Alabama Coalition of Citizens with Disabilities Inc. doing business as Independent Living Center of Mobile to revise disbursement requirements to allow for payment of change orders up to amount of funding provided by the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Number five, authorize sub-recipient agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of South Alabama Inc. up to the amount of $30,000.
So moved.
Second.
Number six, approve investment purchases with county funds by the treasurer for the month-to-month January 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve correction to the January 28, 2019 minutes, agenda item number 15, to read, approve professional services agreement with impact in amount of $11,340.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, adopt a resolution authorizing requests of the district attorney's office to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list, declare surplus property.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve sponsorship with the Boy Scouts of America Mobile Area Council in the amount of $750 from District One funds.
So moved.
Second.
Number 10, approve amendment number one to the professional services contract with Homes &amp; Homes Architects, new fire alarm systems for various Mobile County facilities.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, approve award bid for replace digital management systems at Metrogel SRD Electrical Services.
So moved.
Second.
Number 12, approve change order number one with Rhodes Mechanical LLC, replace condenser number two at Michael Square License Commissioner's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Number 13, approve request of the sheriff's office to add internal purchase vehicle to their fleet as follow.
So moved.
Second.
Number 14, approve amending contract with African Town Community Development Corporation, authorized in the April 9, 2018 minutes, agenda item number 33.
So moved.
Second.
Number 15 is held over. Number 16...
Just on, on item 15, I've had some conversation with legal counsel for the entity, and we're supposed to talk more this afternoon. So I'll hopefully have some more definition and detail before the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 16, approve a lease agreement with Illinois Central Railroad Company as lesser leaser for the use of certain railroad real estate for a five-year term in the amount of $500.
So moved.
Second.
Number 17, approve contract with Denton Magnet School of Technology, PTA, in the amount of $14,000 from District Two funds.
So moved.
Second.
Number 18 is held over. Number 19, consider taking the following action on the bid.
So moved.
Second.
Number 20, approve renewal of VMware software support with SSI under the current state of Alabama contract in a total of $7,619.01.
So moved.
Second.
Number 21, master, approve master service agreement work order number 12 with information transport solutions to renew two-ring software for License Commissioner's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me. Number 22, approve contract with Mobile Area Monogro Association in the amount of $15,000 from District One funds.
So moved.
Second.
Please record me as an abstention on that.
Number 23, approve contract with the Board of School Commissioners to benefit regional school for the deaf and blind in the amount of $15,000 from District Funds.
So moved.
Second.
Number 24, approve purchase of laptop computers, monitors, and workstations from the state business for public work departments, the engineering department, and county administration as follows.
Did we, are these the upgraded numbers, the increase? Do they show the increase?
That is correct.
So moved. Second.
Number 25, approve catering agreement Moe's Original Barbecue for the Association of County Commissions of Alabama's District Administrators meet and luncheon February 27.
So moved.
Second.
26, adopt resolution authorizing sole source contract with election systems and software for purchase of electronic voting machines, including equipment, services, software license, and support for a total cost of $1,631,565.
This is the direction Judge Davis is suggesting?
I don't want to speak for the judge, but Mark, I think we do have...
Oh, there he is. Is this what the judge is suggesting? Yes or no? Okay, thank you. That's what I was after, thank you. So moved.
Second.
27, adopt resolution authorizing request of the county garage to dispose of certain items for fixed assets.
So moved.
Second.
28, authorize contract with Charles W. Porter doing business as CWP Consulting, granting Mobile County Commission permission to use issue of the inner-city news for archival purposes and to provide indexing services.
So moved.
Second.
29, approve appointment of Eddie Kerr as the county member, replacing John Pathenback and Tina Sanchez as the proxy member, replacing Bill Smith to serve on the Gulf Coast Resource Conversation and Development Council.
So moved.
Second.
30, approve reappointment of Steve Tillman and Mike Burden to serve on the Board of Directors of Mobile County Water, Sewer, and Fire Protection Authority.
So moved.
Second.
31, approve contract with MLK Civic and Business Organizations in the amount of $8,500 from District One funds.
So moved.
Second.
32, approve reappointment of Jeanne Blanch and appointment of Kimberly Knowles to serve on the Mobile Historic Development Commission, both for a term of four years.
So moved.
Second.
33, recommend approved resolution for project, Aldot Project Number STPMB 4918, additional lanes with realignment of Airport Boulevard.
So moved.
Second.
34, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-deeds and easements from the following property owners for the following projects.
So moved.
Second.
35, consider waiving section 4.23 of Mobile County subdivision regulations and approving preliminary and final plat of Cochran's House Ferry Division.
Is this the one you asked to be held over?
This is the one that they are not recommending.
Yes.
Commissioner, this is a request for a waiver of granting additional way on a single lot subdivision on the north side of House Ferry Road, and we have amended not to approve this waiver.
Okay.
If there is no motion or second, this...
That we deny the waiver request?
Is there a second motion to deny?
To deny, yes.
To deny? Then this item fails?
Okay. Commissioner 36, I believe you requested that that be held over.
Okay.
37, consider waivers, waiving section 4.43 of Mobile County subdivision regulations setbacks, approving preliminary plat only of collection place, phase two, 12 lots, Collection Court West, District Number Two. I believe you amended it from 20 feet to 15 feet.
Right, with that amendment? Is there a motion with that amendment included the waiver of the setback from 20 feet to 15 feet?
So moved.
Second.
38, recommend resolution of project, Aldot Project Number STPMB 919250, additional lanes on three-notch, coronal road from McDonald Road, eastwardly 1.2 miles to Shillinger Road.
So moved.
Second.
39, recommend approved right-of-way and/or easement agreement with track one in the amount of $200.
So moved.
Second.
Number 40, recommend approved right-of-way and/or easement agreement for track two in the amount of $100.
So moved.
Second.
40, 41, recommend approved right-of-way and/or easement agreement for track two in the amount of $1,770, track six in the amount of $2,970, and buying track nine and 10 in the amount of $960, and track 11 in the amount of $100.
So moved.
Second.
42, recommend award bid for project Glendale Street Place Reservicing Restoration and Rehabilitation to McElney Construction Company LLC for their low bid in the amount of $590,455.21.
So moved.
Second.
43, recommend approved to purchase and deliver 60 tons of number 8910 stone to Hankins Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Here's, we have one add-on, is to recommend accepting a whole harmless indemnity agreement from the City of Sims for the usage of county equipment, and approval annual work order number 10341 to provide labor and equipment to the City of Sims for weekend work. The city is to reimburse the county for all labor costs.
Question, have we received the original signed document on that?
No, ma'am, we received an email copy, and we'll get the original signed.
Should we make this contingent, receiving the original copy, or...
Sure, you can do that.
Okay. So, is there a motion to approve with contingency that the county receive the original document?
So moved.
Second.
44, commission announcements and/or comments.
Commissioner Carl?
I'm good.
Commissioner Ledgut?
I have, I do have an announcement to make based on statutory requirements. The meeting on February the 25th, at the meeting on the 25th, the Mobile County Commission will consider establishing a weight loss incentive program for county employees. And prior to consideration of the program, the public will be granted an opportunity to be heard at that meeting. There is a draft of the incentive program available on the eighth-floor reception desk, and I was required to make that because of the statutory requirement. Thank you.
45, approve request for the motion to adjourn until February 25, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
We stand adjourned. Have a good day. We stand adjourned. Have a good day.